Hello, everybody, and welcome to Books in Hindsight. I am your host, author Matthew Hines. Today, we have an amazing guest. We have the former president of the Seattle City Council, none other than Mr. Nick Locata, a legendary politician in the history of Seattle, and he is on Books in Hindsight. He's here to talk about his book, Becoming a Citizen Activist. And if you want to listen and hear more, please stick around. But before we bring out Nick, I want to ask you to consider subscribing to our podcast on YouTube or wherever you hear it, and also consider a sponsorship at patreon.com/hindsight, or just go to hindsight.com or Books in Hindsight, and click on any of the affiliate links to buy Mr. Locata's book, Becoming a Citizen Activist, or buy any of the books by one of our great authors, including myself. So with that, let's bring out Nick Locata. Let's go to the phones. Hello, everybody, and welcome back to Books in Hindsight. As I promised you, I have former Seattle City Councilman, author, and activist Nick Locata on the show. It's really an honor to have Nick on the show. His biography, the service he did on the Seattle City Council is legendary. And just some of the adjectives that are used to describe Nick are, some are most effective, official of the year, according to the progressive organization. Nick has done a lot of things for the city of Seattle. And as I was explaining to Nick, unfortunately, during his tenure in office, I was actually in the Sultanate of Oman in Saudi Arabia. So I'm not really familiar with much that he's done until I started looking at his book, and he agreed to do the podcast. So finally, Nick Locata, it's a great honor to have a servant, a public servant like you on Books in Hindsight. Welcome to the podcast.
Well, thank you for having me as your guest. And also, I appreciate the effort you're making to publicize books and local authors who are not so local. I think it's really important for people to have as broad an experience as possible in reading different kinds of materials. I think you're doing a great job.
Right. And also, one of the things that I try to focus on, and thank you for that, is I really want to give authors, no matter what their background, their philosophy, no matter what they write, I want to give everybody a chance to speak, because we are human beings, and we do think. And what's the use of thinking if there's nobody there to hear you do it? So that's one of the purposes of Books in Hindsight. And then the other purpose is to help authors like yourself to be publicized and to sell your books and be rewarded for your efforts. So it works for everybody all around on Books in Hindsight. All right. Well, Nick, I guess we're going to just start off by, we're going to talk about, your book is Becoming a Citizen Activist. And you, as I said before, you were on the Seattle City Council for a number of years. And so I guess the first thing that I have to ask you is, I mean, we need to find out about you on the Seattle City Council. So let's start out with, what was your biggest achievement? What was the thing that you're most proud of after serving on the city council?
Surviving. No. In politics, it's always interesting. No, actually, I think if you're talking about issues, it would be probably paid sick leave, and then the minimum wage for $15 minimum wage per hour in Seattle. And we were at the forefront in that, those two issues, for basically making it, I would say, more affordable to live in Seattle by helping people who are working jobs that were at minimum wage, or just slightly above. So this way, they could actually afford to pay the rent and not have to find themselves commuting anywhere from a half hour to well over an hour into the city for a job that doesn't pay all that much. But the other thing, too, it's more of a systems approach as opposed to an issues approach, is I worked hard to try to make our city government and city council as transparent as possible. Couple of things that I initiated and succeeded in doing was, for instance, all the lobbyists that come into Seattle have to register, and then what they post it. So now anybody, journalists use it primarily, or interest groups can see who comes, talks to the council members or the mayor, what day they arrive, and what issue they're talking about. So that's a database that's open to the public. And that was, I think, a critical sort of improvement that we made. And then also, before committees did not have an opportunity for citizens to talk before the committee met. So myself, and also at that time, Richard Condon, Peter Steinberg, the three of us, pushed for having this, basically, a public hearing, public testimony, only two minutes per person, and was limited. But at least it allowed people to have the committee members hear what's on their mind, or to comment on what was before the committee. So those open, sort of transparent, transparency sort of measures, I think, were very critical.
Okay, well, that's the thing about, you made it more affordable to live in Seattle. We need to go back, we need to talk about that a little bit. But I need to just remind people that are listening to the podcast, Nick's book is Becoming a Citizen Activist, and most of his time as a Seattle City Council member, he was an activist. And so let's just go back and talk about making Seattle a more affordable city. I mean, that really seems like with, let's just go, what was your, your years of office were from 2009 to 2012?
No, actually, I was there for 18 years. So I got on the council, that's okay, 98 through end of 2015. So I was there a while.
Okay, I'm gonna have to edit that out. No, I'm not actually gonna edit that out. I do apologize for that. See, so, all right. So again, I was like, but the time that you were in office, then I was also in Alaska. So again, and I have another alibi for...
You've done a lot of probably, huh?
So I'm sitting here with egg on my face, but let's just try to get through the interview anyway. So, all right. So you got onto the city council, and you initiated a number of, you know, a number of things that helped the common person. I guess what I'm trying to get at is a real wave of developers, a whole bunch of things changed in 1988. Seattle was made, or Bremerton was actually made the most livable city. And so you survived a lot of changes when you came into Seattle. Now, the first thing that I do want to point out to people, according to your biography, is that you ran for office, and you were the major underdog, yet you won anyway. Is that where your citizen activism really started?
Well, it actually started back in college. I was, I went to Bowling Green State University, back in Ohio, public school, with a student body and a community, which is right out in the rural area, very conservative. I was there a long time ago, when actually Nixon was running for president. And at that time, they did a survey of students on campus, and well over 65% supported Nixon and Humphrey, who actually only lost the election by a couple percentage points. It was only like 30% support. So it was a very conservative campus. But I became involved with a group called Students for a Democratic Society. They had published a thing called, getting into history, but Port Yeremont Statement, which was all about a concept called participatory democracy. And that really appealed to me. I was very interested in how anyone could have more influence over their life politically. And this seemed to open the door by saying, let's look at our institutions, and let's see who's making decisions, and are they checking in with the people who will be affected by their decisions? And so I helped form the organization, and on a conservative campus, as you can imagine, we weren't very popular. But I learned that, how to listen, and how to work with people who didn't necessarily agree with me. Not to compromise your principles. I think that's one of the problems folks have when they talk about negotiating or compromising. I always believe that what you're compromising really is sometimes the timeline, or sometimes the strategies, but you retain your core principles. And that's, in my estimation, the secret of a successful organizer is learning that difference. So I was able to do that on a college campus basis. It was very, very interesting.
Okay. And just like this interview got very interesting. So you were part of the Students for a Democratic Society?
Yes. In fact, I even wrote about it, because I went to one of the last major national meetings I had, which was a total disaster. In the end, it existed for about 10 years before it literally imploded. But it ended up being factionalized by quite honestly, very extreme groups. And they, in the end, destroyed the organization.
Okay, just to satisfy my own historical curiosity. So you knew Tom Hayden and the Chicago 70s. Did you actually know these people?
Tom Hayden, actually, we brought to campus, and along with some other leaders of SDS. And it's interesting, because I actually wrote a separate memoir from this book about the student power movement in the 60s and 70s, and how it basically grew up and then withered away. And one of the problems was, in my estimation, that there was, in the end, too much reliance on an ideology as opposed to a belief in democracy. But on the Chicago 7, that was the only person. But as you know, Seattle had our own Seattle 7, with Chip Marshall and Jeff Dowd. And I knew all those folks very closely, and I still do. I was never part of it, because I arrived in Seattle in 1970, after they had already conducted their protests and their organizing. But they were on trial. So I actually got to know them just before some of them went to jail.
Yeah. Well, so what was it, Bowling Green is Kentucky, correct?
No, well, Bowling Green isn't Kentucky, but there's another Bowling Green in Ohio, like many, in the country, there are cities that have similar Portland, Portland, Maine, Portland, Oregon. So this was Bowling Green, Ohio.
And so still very, very conservative. So is that what drew you out? Was Seattle's left-leaning political history?
No, actually, and at that time, I had no understanding or consciousness of Seattle's history and leftist politics. It was the furthest point from Cleveland, where I grew up.
I understand that.
So I wanted to get out of, Cleveland is a great working class town, but it never really appealed to me. It has a lot of problems, and unfortunately, it still struggles over color.
It's the New Jersey of American cities, I'm afraid, so.
Well, the Great Lakes region had a number of cities. I mean, at one time, Cleveland was the fifth largest city. I think Detroit at one time was the third largest city. And, you know, Buffalo and a number of other cities have seen a downward spiral. And one of the reasons is because of the automation, the old steel plants became automated, fewer workers, and the demise of the unions under Reagan, beginning in 1980, resulted in a tremendous shift in wealth from basically working class families to the owners, upper echelon managers. I was, the example I use, I was able to go to a four-year college without any debt. And that was because my parents could not afford it. Neither of my parents graduated from high school. So I was the first person to graduate from high school and go to college. And they scraped together, saved for years, and were able to afford one year of college for me. And the one year was quite minimal. It was under $1,000. And the rest of the three years, I worked on campus, and the government allowed, basically, financial aid to people who weren't the bottom of the barrel, just lower, lower-class working people. And that was between those two, working summers, working during the year, and getting some minimal assistance, I was able to get through college.
Okay, so going back to this, your values, you say you separated from the Students for a Democratic Society, because you didn't agree with what I assume are their far, far leftist, and some could almost say Marxist view.
Yes, definitely. There was folks who definitely aligned. But I, you know, when I was in college, I studied a lot of Marxism. So I can pretty much talk to anyone.
Right. And but the difference between where you're coming from in Cleveland in the Midwest and Seattle is that we have never, never experienced the shutdowns of mills and the political upheaval and the things. We've always had a steady, gradually growing economy until, you know, lately, until it just got out of hand. So you have a, you have a experience that a lot of people that you're coming out to, you know, to get to vote for you, a lot of them probably didn't really have that experience. So did that, you know, watching these people make a lot of money as they shipped our industry off, did that, did that kind of influence your activism?
It did. And I should point out, when I arrived in Seattle in 1970, it was right around that time, there was a thing called the Boeing bust. And there was a famous bulletin board that was put up that said, you know, the last person to shut off the light. So there was a downward spiral at that time. And there was a major concern amongst many people that, in fact, Detroit and Cleveland were usually as examples, do we want to go there? But Seattle didn't go there, obviously. And even though there was a downturn, as you point out, there was a steady gradual improvement. It really took off in the last decade and a half, of course. But what motivated me to get involved in politics, and I actually helped, Chip Marshall was one of the Seattle 7, ran for city council twice, and I was the campaign manager. And then I actually ran first time for city council in 79, when I was 30 years old. I lost. I came in pretty high. But I, you know, I've always been, I'm not saying addicted, but I've been attracted to politics, not necessarily electoral politics, but grassroots politics. And so I realized, though, that at that time, I got married, had a kid, I needed to actually get a job. And so I had a rigor, of all things, full-time job as a broker, insurance broker. But during that time, I had, and if you read my book, I talk a little bit about different kinds of things one can do. And I use my own experience as part of those examples. I started to help found a Canadian newspaper called The Seattle Sun. My first book, actually, with the collective I helped create, was People's Yellow Pages, printed 10,000 copies and sold them throughout the city. Helped with some other people, put together a thing called Legs Against Arms, which became, basically, a piece of dance, which was a 24-hour dance marathon held in Seattle Center for probably close to eight years, raised a lot of money for peace groups. And so I was involved one thing after another while I was doing insurance. And then at the end, I realized I found more out of life working with other people to try to improve their lives, which I think insurance does to a certain extent, but a very confined area. So I told the folks that, I really enjoyed working with, and wanted me to become a partner. And I just said, I can't do this the rest of my life. I gotta roll the dice and see what happens. So I ran again for city council in 97. And I was, I was the underdog. All the council members supported my opponent, but one. And the mayor supported my opponent, and both, at that time, daily newspapers endorsed my opponent. So I, things looked a little rough.
But you won.
I did win. And I...
Be modest. So how did you manage to pull that off? I mean, 98, so we're looking at, it's generally the same homogeneous population, a little bit of growth, but pretty much natives. How did you manage to pull that off, being from out of, I mean, basically, you're out of, from out of state? Was it your...
Well, at that time, I'd been there close to 20 years, because I got here in 70. But, but you're right, though. It was, and actually, in many ways, the people I was talking to in Seattle at that time were probably more similar in some ways to people in Cleveland than now, which is much more upscale. And one of the things, well, I did several things, but, and I give advice now to a lot of candidates running for office. And what I tell them is that issues are obviously very important, and some issues remain forever. Traffic congestion will always be here. Improving public education will always be here. Affordable housing has been around for a couple decades. Hopefully, it'll finally not be as great as it is now, as an issue. But what people really care about is they care about sort of general ideas that they want to see if someone's committed to. And the three ideas I always promoted, and it's open-ended, I tell people, maybe you do the same or similar, is transparency in government, because people want to know what their government is doing. They want a fair government. They want to know that everyone has an equal shot at basically receiving public services, not some neighborhoods aren't going to be better than other neighborhoods. And that, that really, people responded very well to that when I ran for office, for both of those. And the third item, which cuts across the political spectrum, whether it's left or right, is you want a government that is efficient, that's spending the money wisely. We'll use a contemporary example, you know, President Trump's law is not an efficient use of money. I mean, I would, as an issue, I would approach it that way, to say, look, you want security, but is this how you want to spend money? And I did the same thing for sports stadiums, public subsidy of sports stadiums, saying, look, professional sports are great, everyone loves to watch them, but why are we spending public dollars that basically go in the pockets of the owners that we don't own this business? So people understand that, as opposed to coming out and hitting just on the issues, because then people decide, oh, I'm for or against that issue. You want to open the door to say, this is how an issue affects you, and you want to be affected this way.
Okay, so now we've jumped into the activists. We've jumped into the activist side of the interview here. And this is, this centers around Nick's book. And so we're going to have to just go ahead and ask you, what was the need to write the book? I mean, are you, is this, I don't know if I can use, if it's good to say this, but is this like the anarchist cookbook cover-all for running a political campaign?
It's funny, yeah. It's funny you should mention the anarchist cookbook, because I actually had that copy once, because I discovered it was banned. And, you know, people always attract the banned literature, they want to see where it is. You know, the title says a lot. We, in talking to the publisher, we had to negotiate a title. And I didn't want to just say, become a citizen activist. I don't want to be declarative. I want people to think about what it means. And so I used the word becoming. And act as a citizen, you know, there's so much debate now whether a citizen or legal, either registered or not. I go back to our original concept that created this great country of ours, is that if you live here, if you're participating in our democracy and helping it grow, you're a citizen. And that's what really a citizen is all about. So the question of, do you have the proper paperwork, is really a false narrative, really a false assumption. And I use the example of, most of the people that are left today probably came from grandparents who immigrated at the turn of the last century, the 1900s. And you think about it, there wasn't a whole lot of paperwork that they did. In fact, they misspelled most people's names when they got through Ellis Island. And the last is activist. A lot of people don't want to think of themselves as an activist. They like the idea of being a citizen, but an activist implies a certain amount of burden, a certain amount of obligation, a certain amount of commitment. And people are a little sensitive about whether they want to go that far, do that much. Now, certainly, a lot of people like to be an activist. But I was aiming for people who wanted to basically think about how some more political control of their lives. So I wrote the book with the idea in mind, not the people who are all firebrand up, wanting to go out and do something, but people basically who are at that edge of realizing they're not happy with what's going on. And this is what you can do about it. And this is the kind of ways you can make changes in an effective way.
Okay, but are you, are you trying to encourage a certain side of the political spectrum, or will it work for everybody?
Well, the first answer is yes. And the second answer is yes as well. You know, it's sort of funny, Rules for Radical by Saul Alinsky was actually handed out by the Tea Party members, because he talked about strategies. And my book talks about strategies as well. I differ from him in a number of ways. But in the book, the examples I use are definitely what I would call on the progressive mindset of how to even out the balance of wealth in this country, so it's way, our country's more stable, and that benefits flow to more people rather than fewer people. I consider those to be core progressive ideas, which I think everyone would agree to. What they disagree about, and I come a family, by the way, that voted Democrats, but they became Reagan Democrats, and now I have family members who are strong Trump supporters. So I know that community, grew up in it, and still in touch with it. What I think happens is that a lot of people get resentful. They feel if some of them is cutting in line, they're cutting in line because they're receiving better benefits, or they're receiving more attention. And so I'm trying to get at the core of, we should all be receiving good benefits. Some people do need more, because they're more at risk. And if they're more at risk, is that because of government policies? And do we need to adjust those government policies? So this way, they have an equal opportunity like all of us have.
Okay. And I understand that that is, it's a very decent and a very human thing to do. And it will work in some cases. And I think it will, it won't work in other cases. But let's go back to, you use the word progressive. And I think a lot of people today, you hear that word so much, and there's no real definition of it. You know, there's no real, there's no definition of a Republican anymore. Or, and when you talk about a progressive, now you have this, because in the old days, what was the meaning of progressive? It was, well, there's things that, some things that need to be changed, and whatever. But today, I think that we have people that call themselves progressives, without really understanding what it is, just because they take on a certain political agenda, that seems to be more leftist. So when I hear progressive, am I wrong in assuming that, well, this is kind of more of a leftist agenda, where they want to tax me more?
It's interesting. The, as you know, the progressive movement arose early 1900s, and it was based in rural, it was based on Republicans. So the word progressive has, over the last hundred-some years, has changed over time, and different groups go along to it, or use it. Same thing with conservatives and Democrats and liberal, I mean, liberal at one time, and still in Europe. Liberal was identified, basically, as small business owners. You know, Adam Smith, the whole idea of more of a market orientation. So these are all slippery terms. And again, you know, I use progressive, because unfortunately, that is the handle that most people use, I think, that would describe what I believe in. But I mean, same thing is true. I'll tell you, like, Republican Party is having a difficult time right now, because I think there's a real distinction between conservatives and reactionaries. I mean, reactionaries are, if you, you know, I was a political science major, has a legitimate definition. It's not, you know, you're a bad person, but it means you want to move things back... It's not, you know, you're a bad person, but it means you want to move things back to what things were. Okay? Conservative means you want to conserve what's here. And our major movement today is actually reactionary movement, to move things backwards. Progressive has adopted more of a liberal thought of, we want to change things going forward. So the question of tax, um, is actually taxes are not bad. Okay? And one of the things that Reagan did, this is very interesting. When Reagan got into power, when he became president, the top tax rate was seventy percent. Okay? Now it's thirty-five and they want to lower it now to twenty-two. I forget, it keeps getting lower and lower. There were, there was a larger middle class in the seventies than there is now. And that the ratio between business owners and employees was thirty to one. Okay? Seems high. After the tax cuts that Reagan pushed through, Bush pushed through, and now Trump, it's over three hundred. It's like five hundred. Now, some people, the average person, I don't think really cares that much because it's a number, it's a concept, you can't really grab onto it. But the effect is real. The effect is that people have less money to spend. And what happens is that you have less money to spend, that means that the economy actually is not growing as well as it could be. And why is that? Because the corporations that are making stuff or businesses are making stuff for people who have money. So where, for instance, Apple is a great example, where are they selling more phones now than anywhere around the world? In China, because they literally have now a larger middle class than we do. They have a larger population as well. But, so the market doesn't know national boundaries. It goes to where buyers are. And if you don't give your people enough money to buy, your market's going to shrink.
Okay, so now we've, we, we've jumped into economics very quickly. And this is just what I'd like to say, because going back to your message of, um, the, of, we have, uh, that some people should get more and, and, and basically a liberal message that will sell in a certain community. And then a different message, like the conservative message, that is going to sell in another community. So when we get back into talking about activism, you really have to understand what your market is and, and how you're going to sell that. And just, um, in case people don't know, uh, I ran for the Cantwell seat in Washington State. And I went to these Republican rallies and there was nobody there. And they were all older than, uh, uh, well, either they were very young because they were with their parents. Or, or they were generally older, but not a lot of, uh, working-class people. So I, I was really shocked by that. And I said, boy, the Republican Party is pretty much dead in Washington State. And, um, anyway, so, because that message that, like, I, I, I don't want to, you know, I, I support President Trump, but if you see my agenda, I want free tuition. I want twenty dollars an hour. And people said, oh, that's, you're a socialist, you know? But I think the only strength we have is our education system. And, um, I do think we need to, to work on immigration. So our, our agendas are, are, are different. And it's really, as far as your activism goes, am I incorrect in saying that you really have to be sending the right message in the right market?
Partly, but maybe I'm naive, okay? But I really believe that. It's interesting. I, I have a belief that you can cross those markets. I believe, I mean, the way I wrote the book was to talk about how do you make an effective argument to your politician, whatever party he belongs to or she belongs to, where they are put in structure? See, I, I define myself as a, I suppose I'd be, I'd be consider myself a democratic populist. I believe that the strength of any society is based on how well people can treat each other and protect each other and feel secure. Okay? And I think that's best achieved under a democratic, um, institutions. And I think that, and maybe this is the major difference that I might have with, with people who are, though, because I'm a liberal, is that I think that the economy plays a critical role in that. And I believe that, um, the economy, I've, I've attended a lot of conservative, uh, groups and meetings. There's a group called Alec, you might be familiar with it. I've gone to their national meetings. And a lot of good people, and a lot of people, they're not, they're, they're not all think alike. That's true for the left and, and the right. That's the first thing people have to understand is that there are, people are open to more different ideas than we give them credit for. I like to think of a spectrum as that, we tend to divide it as between left, right, and center. But it's much more nuanced than that. There is the far left and far right, okay? And those people believe in something very passionately. And it's highly, highly unlikely they're going to change their mind because they're committed to it. There are people who are in that third sector, each one, who support those issues, maybe some percent, maybe a high percent, maybe a low percent, but they're also willing to consider other things. And that is the market you're sort of after. And the middle strata, it's funny, if you aim at the direct middle, those are the people who never make up their mind, and they're basically unpredictable. So you're really looking at the margins, uh, of both independents and the left and the right. And that is, when you think about the market, it's not just left or right. It's really, you're aiming for how you build the center.
Right, okay. So let's go back to your statement about economics, because I actually had a two, a two-part, uh, question about, you know, sending the right message, because it seems to be that ours, our, our system, not the Chinese system where they have money that they can, uh, I, I don't even want to talk about that, but our system is based on tight, uh, based on tight money, where the guy at the bottom works the hardest and receives the least. And so when you have more, uh, you have a, a lot of people that are receiving very less money, that they're, they're scrambling for money from somewhere, and those people are going to do what? They're going to vote Democratic. Is that correct? Whereas if you, if you give them, and, and they're, you know, I know that in the Midwest, there are a lot of loyal, very loyal Democrats that worked in the factories and whatever. But generally, uh, the Republican Party has now shifted to the working class, um, and the, the business owner. And the Democratic Party is everybody on the bottom. And then the millionaires on top who direct the traffic. Is, is that, is that a crazy statement?
Let me repeat what I think you said, is that the democratic constituency or base consists of the people at the very lowest and the very top. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because when we look at, um, like politicians, uh, you know, I ran against somebody who was a multi-multi-millionaire and has millions of dollars to, to put into a campaign fund from very rich tech companies, you know? So, so that's really not an open system where there's nobody, I mean, there were twenty-nine, twenty-eight people tried to unseat her from both parties. And nobody, nobody came close. And of course, I, just on, from my own point, I think the Republicans really just threw the whole thing. But, uh, anyway, um, you can, as, as an activist, how do you compete against that kind of, of money against you? And you did it.
Well, you, you know, you can't use one election or one campaign or one, um, you know, ballot issue to, to basically say it doesn't work or it does work, you know? I mean, it's, you have to look at the compromise, the number of things. And I will, just for a moment, point out that, and I think we're talking about Maria Cantwell. She didn't start, she did not start off and inherit a lot of money. But, uh, she definitely had large corporations in deep pockets. But if you look at the whole strata, uh, people with large corporations in deep pockets, there's more of them still in the Republican Party than the Democratic Party. Not that the Democratic Party doesn't want them, okay? And that's probably the problem, is that both parties are chasing the upper and they're ignoring the people at the bottom, unless they make a lot of small contributions. So, um, but I think, how, to answer your question, how do you overcome a lot of money in a campaign? No matter what kind of campaign you're talking about. I mean, it sounds trite and overused, but it, it is a combination, I believe, of grassroots organizing. But you can't just say grassroots organizing. You have to have some vision of what you're promoting. And some people have to feel a trust that you're going to be with them as you promote that vision and, and try to bring people in. And that gets, you know, I mean, I think Trump received a lot of support because, well, as I heard it from folks, they were just so angry at the system. And he didn't really run as a Republican, he ran as Trump. And that was pretty clear when he knocked off the top leaders of the, of the Republican Party who were running for president, who thought they were going to win. And so I think what, what happened there is that he touched on a great amount of anxiety, anger, and people wanting something done. As I always said, the campaign between, um, you know, Hillary Clinton and, and Trump was someone running as a manager, which is what I think she was basically running for, you know? People who were more on the manager level. Oh, yeah, this person knows how to run a business, this person knows how to do that. They almost stripped away the idea of what the policies were, but they felt comfortable. This person's going to be a manager. People don't get excited about managers. I mean, seriously. And Trump, no one really thought was, I mean, he billed himself as successful. We don't really know what he managed. If you look too closely, you'd find out there's a lot of things he mismanaged. But that wasn't it. He wasn't running as a manager. He was running as a change agent, and Hillary was not. And that's, I think, so how do you overcome money? Money itself will help, but you can misspend money, you know? And money will not win an election by itself. I mean, look at, uh, Bento in Texas. Huge, I think it was forty million, I can't remember, a huge amount of money. He lost by six points and he broke all the records, you know, much higher than anybody else ever got. But if you thought it was just money, that was not going to work. And you can vote on, and you can use examples on the other side as well.
Yeah, and Nick, I don't want to, let's just jump ba- back for a second. I don't want to use my campaign, which was a complete strat, I was a, I, I did, I did nothing right. I did absolutely nothing right. I made a lot of assumptions that were not true. And so I don't want to use my campaign. I'm just using basically Washington State as a general example. But let's talk a little bit more about the specifics of your book. So, um, you, um, because we're kind of talking about that now. And this kind of, uh, is kind of a segue, I guess, going from having all this money to spend on, on, on a media campaign. Now, in your book, you talk about effective media campaign strategies. So can you, uh, just talk a little bit about how, I mean, because you're talking about, number one, you're talking about social media, and then you're talking about, um, what you call traditional media.
Right.
Uh, let's take social media. What if I'm, what if I have an agenda that we've seen that, uh, the social media owners, they don't like? So how, how's that going to work for me?
Who do you say doesn't like social media?
Well, you know, we saw the thing on Google and, uh, Facebook about how they would manipulate searches and things, had like a, a conservative view. So in your book, you talk about using social media, but you know, it, um, what, is that going to affect anything, do you think?
Well, social media is just one tool. So I do believe it's, it's useful. I think the mistake people believe is that they're just using that as the only tool. You know, I don't know if I mentioned it in the book, but it's, it's like having a tool shed. There's different tools for different uses. Social media, and look at the two biggest formats, although Instagram's out there now, but, uh, you know, Facebook and Twitter, um, they're good for getting a short, quick message out. They're not good for in-depth. I mean, that's more true for Twitter. And Facebook, you go do more in-depth, but also you're limited by who you can reach as well, in both of them. So they're, they're good for addressing your base, if you have a base, or building a small base. They're not as good as bringing outside folks in. So if you're using social media to win a campaign, you want to use social media to get volunteers, to get people to help you to spread the word. You're not going to spread the word to people who, as I pointed out in the other example of that, the strata that you're trying to persuade, they're probably not going to be moved much by them, by the Twitter or the, or the Facebook, because it's not deep enough, it doesn't offer enough. And it's, they're going to categorize it. But the people who, who like your message, who you can reach and support you, that's where the, it, it collects those folks. And then the question, then what you want to use your money for is staffing to go out and, or volunteers to reach those people, to get them to go out and, and spread the message. And then on, um, traditional, go ahead.
Nick, can I ask you, okay, from, from your own experience? Because I really don't, I want people to read your book. And I, I don't want, uh, you to give them information that, uh, that they might, uh, be better off to, to just go ahead and, and get your book and read it. But, um, going back to your campaign, I mean, you're, uh, you had built up, obviously, you said you'd been here for twenty years. So, and you were working within, uh, different groups before you ever threw your hat in the ring, correct?
I said that, I ever threw my hat.
So you, but you had been here for twenty years, you say. You had, um, you were, you were active politically, you were involved in a number of issues. And so, um, would you, if you're like, uh, somebody that, that wants to get started in politics, advise, you know, start in a small group, get, get people together? Because one of the hard things it would seem to be is you don't want your family, uh, running or working on your campaign. So how do you get those people around you? And what people do you want?
Well, um, you're right, Doug. Being, uh, considered of your family is critical. That, that is, you want to make sure that they're on board or that you're, you're working with them on, on issues that are not campaign-oriented. I belonged to a lot of different groups during that, during the time before I ran for city council. And I didn't actually belong to them with the idea that I was going to run for office. But like I said earlier, I just enjoyed, I enjoy people and I enjoy working with people on different issues. Now, a lot of the groups I worked with were arts, arts organizations. And that's a good example. I was working with arts organizations and actually, as, actually, I insured, I insured a lot of artists. So it, it matched. And I realized as I was running for office, the election I won, no one had really been talking about the art community. No one had really been talking about artists and what their needs were. They had focused on a few of the big art institutions. That would be, you know, the symphony and, and opera and ballet, which are all great institutions. They hire many people and they support them. But they didn't really talk about the smaller groups that you could draw, including independent, um, bands where they play in bars or, or for, there were art galleries and artists had just never gotten it. So, and there's many more of them. And I was sensitive to their needs. And I realized, this is a constituency no one is talking about. So that's the political, that's, that's the practical part. It's like, oh, I could actually talk to them, and it's not like a crowded field. No one is here talking to them but me. Actually, the same thing happened of all groups was dog owners. Seattle had no dog parks in Seattle, zero. And a couple of people approached me and said, we had no dog parks. And I, I don't, I didn't know a pet, I do now, but I didn't then. And I said, oh, well, why is that? Because the parks department's against it, which it turned out was. And I said, well, that doesn't seem fair. Again, question of fairness. It seemed like, you know, people have dogs, they should be able to have a place to go run. You don't want to take over all the parks, but there should be some space for them to go. So then I started going around, meeting these people who were in favor of off-leash areas, fenced in. And I realized again, no one was talking to them. And this was a big group and they were organized. And so the irony is that, yeah, I won the election based on dog owners and artists and, and people who basically, I mean, there are other groups that I approached, that no one ever talked to. And it wasn't like a left-right thing. That's what I'm saying. It's a question of people who basically were cut out of the decision-making.
Okay, so you basically, that's, that's an amazing story. And I hope that there, there's a lot of people that know that story. Is that in your book?
Um, a bit, but not, not, not big time.
Because that is how, that is how American politics should work. I mean, there is a need, you saw that need, and you went and you did something about it. Instead of, you know, what we've been talking about so far, which is, uh, politics based on fear and, and basically want. So, um, let's talk about, uh, let's talk about your, your, we're talking about you, the, the candidate, but, but your book is not about being a- but your book is not about being a candidate. And there's something that I had to ask you, and that is, because most people who are what you call, what do I want to say, activists?
Yeah.
Are actually, they're politicians. They're politicians, but they're activists. And so I, one of my questions is, do, I mean, there are some people out there that have just decided to run based upon the fact that they are an activist. They, they don't seem to have any more wisdom, learning, experience, knowledge, anything that can, that can help the rest of, the rest of us. But, but they're running because they're an activist and they are applauded by everybody just based on the fact that they're an activist. But there's, there's no understanding of they're an activist for what? So is, my question is, if you are, should you not ask yourself, am I really going to have something to offer before I start to run for an office?
One would hope so. Yes.
Do you think that is happening now? Or do you think people say, no, I just want to see my name in the paper and I want to promote this agenda? Or I want to promote somebody else's agenda who's going to pay me to do that?
Well, I'm sure there are people like that, but here's what I found. From talking to people who I worked with on the city council or state legislature, and I'm talking about, obviously in Seattle, they're mostly liberals. And the state legislature, I talked to people on both sides of the aisle. But like I said, I've gone to conferences that are all only conservatives and I'd call it reactionaries. And what I come away with is that, I'm a believer, and again, I could be naive. I think most people who run for office actually want to do good. The difference is that some people may think, that's not good, that's bad. But they themselves think it's good. Okay? And so I think people do run for office thinking that they want to improve society, the country, the city, the state, you know? And so that is an issue base. The problem comes is that they don't know how to do it even after they get in office. Actually, I've written a couple of little brochures. One is sort of interesting. You say activist. I said, once a politician, you have to think as an activist. Because in my mind, an activist is someone who works with the community. And too many people, whether they call themselves an activist or not, once they get elected to office, they think all of a sudden they're the leader. They're not the leader per se. They have access to power. They have access to information. But they're not a leader unless you've got someone who are supporting you. And the problem also is that people who elect someone to office, they abandon them. They think all of a sudden this person is going to do everything for me because I voted for him or her. And that's not, also not the, going to work. You have to have a sense that you are still a team player with the community writ large. And you have to engage them. One of the things I did, and I still do actually, I put out a newsletter all the time. I explained exactly what I was doing. And I, and it was, you know, in-depth. And I knew some people were not going to like it. Some people who supported me for any number of reasons are going to say, they're not going to like this, but I'm going to tell them why I'm doing it. And I also told myself, this is the other thing, five terms that I amazingly survived, was I assumed I wasn't going to win the next time. So this way, you're not looking over your shoulder all the time. You're just basically saying, okay, this is a four-year job and after that I'll do something else. And that relieves you a lot. You sleep a lot better at night because you're not worried about you're going to have a job because you know you probably won't. But what I found was that people would come up to me and say, you know, I don't necessarily agree with you because you're much more liberal than I am. But, but you tell me what you're doing and you explain what you're doing. And I don't really get that from a lot of other folks. So I'm, you know, I'll support you. So I think that's what people want. They want to be respected. They want, they want someone to basically talk to them and explain why they're doing something. They may disagree, but if they, they can understand your reasoning and it seems reasonable, you'd be surprised how much more support you'll get.
Right. And I think that going back to your example of Trump, I know that people want to, that nobody can, everybody wants to put in their own take on it. Why did he win? As far as I get it, I'm just a normal guy. I think, I think that he just says things that most Americans would say and his guys sit in the barber shop or at the bar talking that, oh, if I was a president, I'd do this. Well, here's somebody that says, I'm going to backly that. And he was able to, to really capitalize again on the same need. Not the same need, but, but he saw that need and, and he capitalized on it politically. So as far as I'm concerned, I, that's, that was my, I'm just old enough to where I've seen so many people. And, you know, I have many more problems with Republicans than I do Democrats. But just lately, it seems to have gotten, but Democrats have always tried to generally help people. And, and so, but I've always, you know, kind of been conservative. So I'd be like a Ralph Nader, small r, Republican. He was a small d Democrat. But, go ahead.
Now, I can say, what's interesting is that we may share this. I enjoy reading ancient history and current history and political history. I haven't run across this in any of the major media. We all know about Ross Perot, I assume, right? Who ran for president in 93 or 94 and.
I voted for him as well.
No. Well, here's the other, for a while after Perot lost, Trump was on the Perot ticket, the independent party, they call it. And so was Ralph Nader at one point. So it's funny that you mentioned Ralph Nader because Ralph Nader and Trump at that time still had some overlap of interests or perspective of how government was not responding. And I mean, I think they would probably disagree on 80% or more, but there was an overlap. And I think a lot of people fall into that overlap as well.
Yeah. So, and I haven't even had a chance to say this, but as Nick Locata, former president of the Seattle City Council, as we sit here and talk and we're just about ready to wrap up this meeting, the context of this interview is that the government is shut down right now. I assume it's still shut down because President Trump wants a border wall and the Democrats and the Congress don't want to give it to him. So that is the context of our interview right now. And we are discussing social activism. So now we need to get in because we, you had kind of talked a little bit about funding, I think. But we need to, before I let you go, we need to talk about social, or not social media, traditional media that you talk about in your book, How to Get It? And how do you get it without the catch-all? You need, you need money for that. And then also we're talking about engaging, you know, everything from, from not only TV channels, but newspapers, et cetera. How do you do that? And how do you get a favorable treatment from them without having money?
Well, one, you have to use the media to your advantage. As a candidate, I was always looking at, and again, I had, you know, I mean, I had networks that I knew, but I was a public figure. But every time I read the newspaper every day, in those days we had two newspapers and I would see what are the top issues that people are talking about that affect the city policy. And then I would, if it was relevant, I would make a comment, make sure the journalist knew about it. So next time they wrote a story, they might actually use my name and reference it. Now, that's not going to hit a lot of people, but just what they call opinion makers, right? People who basically persuade other people. Those are people who read the newspapers. So you have to think of it as like a pyramid. You want to hit the people who are the most politically astute. And if they recognize, oh, this person's taking this position and he sounds reasonable, you begin to get the word out. And then they save the clippings, whatever. That's our free media. I said, anytime you can get something free, it's better than not. It's sort of funny. For about 10 years before I ran, I didn't know it was a thing about running, I would write letters to the editor. In those days, we used to have a lot more letters to the editor. And I got to be very good at writing. In those days, you couldn't write more than 150 words. So I'd have to take an issue and how do I summarize something in 150 years that's 150 words that is current in the paper? And that had a very high hit ratio because they get tons of letters to the editor. And I would, I would say two out of three of mine would get published. So you use the media as much as you can in that sense. And then also, don't go down the same road. You know, so many politicians spend money on consultants. I never used a consultant to run a campaign, you know? Generally, I, last two campaigns I used, they used people who were less than 21 years old. Right? They were just, they were excited. They wanted to do something. They had to pay a huge amount of money. And I did a lot of my own writing, my own script writing, my own brochures and flyers and things of that sort. So you do all that stuff yourself. People waste a lot of money on campaigns.
Okay. So you, you defeated, I assume that your opponent was Democrat or Republican?
He was a Democrat.
And how long had they been in office?
Oh, no, it was an open seat.
It was always an open seat. Okay. So, and your competition?
Well, there were six or seven of us. And the main competition was a person who I've gotten to know well. Blank out his name, but he was, worked for the city. He was well-known as someone who came up with the pedestrian plan for, for the city's transportation department. He was well-liked. He was very articulate. And so he was not, you know, a pushover. He was someone who raised about twice as much money as I did. And the other people who ran were much more community-based people. They didn't come out of the Democratic Party, actually. Most of them came out of neighborhood groups. And then in the primary, the two of us got through. And I went to all of the other people and asked if they would support me. And I had all endorsed me. And part of that was because I was willing to talk about the issues they were interested in.
Okay, Nick, I think you're probably getting a little bit hoarse. So I'm going to just ask you one more question and we're going to go full circle back to the beginning of the interview. So I asked you at the beginning, what did you do that is going to like, to leave a legacy? And you talked about the, making Seattle a more affordable city. When I, when you look at the Seattle City Council now and you were the president, and I don't need to, I don't need to say anything to step on any toes, but the things that you implemented, are they still, are they still there? And do they still respect Nick Locata and his time as the president?
I think so. I know all the council members. Some I worked with, others got onto the council after I left. You know, one of the things that I did was I resigned from the council. And it may be self-serving, but, but my, my wife also wanted to have seen more of me as opposed to being out about politicking. But ego-wise, I didn't want to leave because I thought I was, I had to because I was afraid of losing whatever, which I said I wasn't before. So I did some survey work and I went to one against the other council members because they had consolidated the districts. And that made me feel good. So I figured, okay, I can, I can quit. And when you quit, when you're at your peak of the game or near the top of the game, people remember that. If you quit at the bottom of the game, they can remember that. So whether I, whether it's due to me or not, I think the timing of when I quit left a, an image of, oh, he was successful. But I think a lot of the items that I did pass are still part of the city council's operations. Like I mentioned, registering lobbyists and having opportunities for people to speak before the council. And the laws that I passed also gone forward. The Office of Labor Standards, basically I founded it. I mean, you know, the mayor got credit because he signed off on it. But I was the one who went down to San Francisco and said, you're passing these laws, how do you know they're being enforced? Well, we have this office. And I interviewed people. I took people down from the city with me and, and basically came back and, you know, wrote the legislation. So little things are still around. I mean, I helped create the commission on people with disabilities because they weren't represented. So a number of the stuff that I was doing, I think made, made a difference. And you don't have to create everything all the time yourself. One of the things, best way to get something passed is get someone else to be the sponsor because they'll get all the credit and you'll get it passed. So learn how to share the glory.
Well, Nick, that is, I mean, you are obviously a legendary figure in Seattle history. And, you know, we are talking about your book, Becoming an Activist, A Citizen Activist. But I think there's a lot of people out there that hope that you will write a book about your tenure in Seattle, because that is part of, I can't think of another period in history, except maybe the, the gold rush or World War II, where the boom, you presided basically over the boom of, you know, one of the major cities in Seattle. And I think that's historically important. So I would hope, do you have any plans of, of writing a book about your time?
I have so many plans on writing various things. Getting the time is always the hard part. So.
Well, I think that, you know, maybe history, maybe because of your role in Seattle, you maybe, you owe history. Maybe there's an obligation there. I'm sure there's a lot of people that would like to see, you know, what was happening during the changes in the city. And I'm sure it would be definitely commercially successful. So anyway, so much for me suggesting how to run your life. But Nick Locata, I cannot say how grateful I am for you appearing on the podcast. You are really a legend in politics. You are a master politician. What you did as far as even reaching the Seattle City Council is obviously legendary in Seattle history. And what you've done, you're a big part of, of the history in the city. And I thank everybody here that comes, visits and sees what a wonderful city it is, owes you a debt of gratitude. So I'd like to say personally, as somebody who grew up in Washington State, thank you for, for all you serve us to our state and our city.
For that, you're too kind.
Well, I, I hope that people are giving you the credit that is due to you. So anyway, well, Nick Locata, I just want to say that your website, and I apologize for not saying this before, is becominganactivist.org. That is becominganactivist.org.
Becoming a citizen activist.
What's that?
Becoming a citizen activist.
I don't know how, I was wondering how that, I actually was looking up my website. Obviously was tired when I wrote it. But okay, so becomingasitizenactivist.org is Nick Locata's website. And the book again is Becoming a Citizen Activist. Okay, Nick, well, again, thank you for being on the podcast and I wish you luck in your endeavors. And for everybody out there watching, I just want to ask you to please get Nick's book. It's an amazing how to, of how to become involved in today's crazy political environment. And you can buy Nick's book on Books in Hindsight. You can get it at hindsight.com. I have affiliate links for them there. And they're also available on Amazon in Kindle and print version. All right. I think I've covered it. And also you can listen to this podcast if you're on YouTube. You can listen on Spotify, Stitcher, iHeartRadio, Google Play and iTunes. See, I've gotten pretty good at that. All right. Well, this is Matthew Hines for Books in Hindsight with Nick Locata. And we will say goodbye to everybody. So long.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
This has been Books in Hindsight with your host, Matthew Hines. Please join us for our next podcast, and look for our archives on iTunes and go to theheinsight.com. That's H-E-I-N-E-S site dot com for great books by Matthew Hines and other great authors.